What a great evening, this evening. We have a special meeting of the City Council of the City of Yuba City slated for this. Date and time. I'd like to have a roll call, please.
Mayor Buckland.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cleveland.
Here.
Councilmember Dibbal.
Here.
Councilmember Dukes.
Here.
Councilmember Gill.
Here. Thank you very much. And tonight we'll have the invocation will be led by Councilmember John Dukes, followed by our Pledge of Allegiance by Manisha. And she is right here. So we'll have the invocation first, and then you'll lead us in the pledge.
If we could please stand.
Could all rise, please.
Heavenly Father, we are here this evening to honor Dedar Bains. A man who is well-known in our community and around the world. So well-known that when you're riding in a cab in Washington DC, the cab driver asks you where you're from, and you tell him Yuba City, and he asks you if you know Dedar Bains. Lord, we thank you that we have been blessed to have such a visionary man in our community. He has been a man who wasn't someone who just had a vision and did nothing with it. But he was someone who took the vision and made it come to life. We honor Dedar tonight, and we ask you to pour out a special blessing over him and his family. Our community is much richer because of Dedar Bains. We ask that your presence be here with us tonight, and we pray this in your most holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Manisha, for leading us through that. This is a meeting of the City Council. We're doing it in a formal sense. So tonight we have public communication and appearance of interested citizens. Members of the public may address the City Council concerning any item that has been described in this notice of this meeting. We will take comments as we proceed through the process of making some presentations and honoring Mr. Dedar Bains tonight. So we will give an opportunity to some in the community. If everyone spoke, I'm sure we would be here until probably tomorrow at this very hour. So as we move on, I would like to acknowledge some of the individuals that are here, elected officials. And we have Assemblyman James Gallagher. James is right here in the back. Senator Jim Nielsen. And our Congressman John Garmandy could not make it. Virginia Cleaver is here representing his office. Sutter County Supervisors, the Board Chair, Mr. Larry Munger. Vice Chair Jim Whitaker. Barbara Levake. And Mr. Dan Flores. And from Yuba County, we have Mary Jane Griego. And John Nicoletti. We have the Sutter County Superintendent of School, Val Dillon. The Leveque Mayor, Luc Ver Gaugat. Oh, and Ron Solinger says we missed him. There's Ron. We have former Mayor Roy Ramirez also with us. Former Sheriff and father of Jim, Roy Whitaker. Sutter County Board of Education, Jim Richmond. And also Carm Baines. I'm looking to see if I missed anyone else. If I have, just raise your hand if you're way outside. Sorry, I'm probably not going to be able to read the message you're trying to give me, so. All right. Again, tonight we are here to present honors and make some presentations to Dedar Singh Bains. Dedar is an individual who has led who has led our community with vision, with passion, with compassion, and has always been an individual that has treated others fairly, and certainly has grown a very large understanding of our community needs and bonding the Sikh community and overall the Indian community here in Yuba City and Sutter County and our region. Without Dedar, there would be many things absent. And I speak almost directly of the Sikh Parade, which I had the honor of working the very first Sikh Parade. That Dedar's vision was to be able to bring this festival together as a religious event, but also as a community event to interface this, the Sikh population, and grow over time. That first parade only had about 300 people, was threatened by rain, and grew year after year. I was able to deal I was always able to deal with Dedar on a one-to-one basis. I was a police officer at the time. And worked right alongside Dedar to be able to provide the highest level of safety for the parade, and be able to have the opportunity to grow that parade over time and have all of the resources available. And his largest concern was always about the safety of the entire community and being able to bring together an understanding and kind of a mutual bond during this time of year. And I grew to appreciate every time I had the opportunity to meet with Dedar, it always started off with a meal. No matter what, he made sure that before we spoke, that we had a meal together, and he always provided that. So tonight, the reception out front was certainly set as an honor to Mr. Bains and what he always provided for us. I also had the honor in 1984 of being his driver. When things were a little tenuous in India, he had returned back to the States, and the Sikh Parade was in jeopardy of not occurring that November, only because there was a concern for safety. And after many conversations with Dedar, he wanted that parade to go forward. Many of you will remember that the streets were lined with heavy equipment, and there were individuals in town making sure that things were safe and secure in advance of that event. And that is the year that we changed the parade to come around and go down Pool Boulevard. And that is today's established route, and we're proud of the many years, the decades of that parade occurring in this town. And certainly, everything that we see today is a result of that vision in those early years, and all of the planning that Dedar did to make sure that it happened without a hitch. And the last note I want to make before we get into some of the presentations down front here is his care. His care for public safety. After many of the parades, Dedar always provided a meal for all of the officers that had to come in and work on overtime. And he did that for years before it was stopped by the Chief of Police for just various reasons. And part of it was to the continued pay for the officers to be able to attend. And but he always had a deep care and compassion for each of the individuals that worked many times, 12 and 14 hours. But that also carried forward to just a few years ago, when in Oak Creek, Wisconsin, there was a shooting. And when that shooting occurred, Dedar's, Dedar and others from the community banded together and raised funds for Officer Brian Murphy, and which they provided over $100,000 for his ongoing medical care and to make sure that that officer was taken care of. If many of you don't know, Brian Murphy has been in our community a number of times and was severely injured, and will, those injuries will last for the rest of his life. He will never regain full use of his voice and other things, just from the violence that was put upon others. And the care that this community poured upon Wisconsin was led through those efforts of Mr. Bains as the days afterward, you know, went on. But he's been a friend to many, to our governor, to presidents. He has advised on a number of cases following 9/11 and even times before that, for presidents to be able to understand more about the Sikh community and its interaction with the various communities. So we honor Mr. Dedar Bains tonight. I'm going to ask Cash Gill. Cash and I discussed this in great length in advance of this event occurring tonight. And it was over time, and everyone, I've been asked tonight, why now? Well, why now is, why didn't we do it a few years ago? Why didn't we do it 10 years ago? And you can continue to put this off, but now is the time to honor this man in a way that is a very, his distinguished life, it would be an honor to be able to be here. And Cash and I, when we talked about this, wanted to make sure that it was done with just the outpouring of gratitude that we have for what we've learned from Dedar over time. So I will be asking Cash to join me up front as we do part of the presentations. And I've never been at, to an event at the temple that didn't take hours. So we plan on dragging this out just as long as we possibly can. I'm going to need to read this also. And it's in tiny print because it has a lot on here. When we do proclamations, they're short, and I do a condensed version to this, but there is no way tonight that we could do that. So I will start this off with Dedar Singh Bains, a Punjabi-American pioneer. Whereas Dedar Bains came to the United States in 1958 at the age of 18 with $8 to his name, settled in California, and worked as a laborer and eventually foreman for farms, for farmers, Roy Noreen and Steve Nelson. And whereas through sheer hard work, perseverance, and keen business acumen, Dedar Bains was able to purchase his first piece of land in 1962, then another and another. And by 1978, he became the largest peach farmer in California, also growing prunes, walnuts, almonds, grapes, on about 40,000 acres of farming land in 13 counties, including Butte, Glen, Sacramento, Sutter, Tahima, Yuba. And whereas in 1978, Dedar Bains began to purchase and develop agricultural lands in Washington and British Columbia, growing raspberries, blueberries, black currants, cranberries, becoming the agricultural cooperative Ocean Spray's second-largest grower of cranberries. And whereas despite his humble origin, Dedar Bains has emerged as the largest peach farmer in California and one of the largest in the world, and is widely known as the Peach King due to his success in farming. And in 1964, Dedar married Santi Punyan, a daughter of a family of influence and prosperous farmers, including her grandfather, Daiwan Singh of Arizona, who is recognized for bringing crop rotation to the United States. Santi and Dedar have three children, Ajit, Diljit, and Carm. And whereas Dedar Bains is not only known for his success as a farmer, he played critical roles in founding and funding Sikh institutions, foundations, and festivals in Yuba City and globally. He wields political influence in Sacramento, Washington DC, New Delhi, and Chiang Mai, and is influential and unprecedented philanthropist of the South Asian diaspora. And whereas in 1979, Dedar Bains established the annual Sikh Parade in Yuba City, which celebrates the birth of the Sikh Holy Book and draws over 100,000 Sikhs to the area every year, and is one of the largest Southeast Asian festivals outside India. And whereas the Sikh Parade promotes positive international recognition and economic prosperity in our region, bringing Sikhs from all around California, the United States and Canada, and other locations around the world to observe the festivities, welcoming all ethnicities and religions every year, rain or shine. It's only rained a couple of times, Dedar. An increasing number of Sikh devotees and spectators flock to Yuba City for a weekend of festivities and time-honored tradition, and a parade featuring devotional hymns. And in 1984, after many lives were lost between the Sikhs and Hindus in India, Dedar Bains founded the World Sikh Organization, which worked to fight human rights violations in India, and serving as the head of the North American Akadai. Yeah. And in 1985, he became the founding chairman of the World Kabaddi Federation and sits on the World Sikh Council. And whereas it's uncontestible that anyone inside or outside of India has given more or done more for the Sikh faith and its people, he was, after all, the first to bring international recognition to Sikhs in California and Yuba City. And in 2014, thousands joined the Governor Jerry Brown to honor Dedar Bains for enriching the state and nation with his culture, work ethic, charity, and financial contributions. And whereas this ability to give back and empower others has been a hallmark of Dedar Bains' life's work. This idea and the will and ability to change lives, as he has, makes Dedar Bains the epitome of the American dream. Starting from nothing but faith and confidence, he was able to rise in stature and prominence in every facet of his life, and help mentor other Sikh people to do the same. Now therefore it be resolved that we, the City Council of the City of Yuba City, sincerely urge all residents of the City of Yuba City and Sutter County Region to join us in recognizing Dedar Bains for his incredible contributions to the Yuba City community and enriching our cultural heritage. Done the second day of November 2016. Dedar. Don't block him out. We also have a presentation from the Congressman's office. So Virginia Cleaver, where she may be, she's going to make her way through the, and part the sea of media and photographers. On behalf of the Congressman, Virginia would like to make a presentation.
Thank you, Yuba City, for putting together this wonderful event for this special man. The Congressman wanted to do something extra special for you, Dedar. So what we've done is we've created a condensed version of that wonderful proclamation that Yuba City gave you. And Congress is not in session right now, but it will be in a couple of weeks. And the Congressman is going to enter it into the Congressional Record from the House floor. So I have a copy of it right here for you, but I want to get an original signature on it for you. I'm going to leave this with you now, and I'll
[laughter]
Okay. This is the go-to guy right here. All right. And I'll get that original signature for you once it's spoken from the House floor. All right. Congratulations, sir. Well deserved.
I'm not going to give you the microphone yet, Dedar. I know where this could go, very, very quickly. There's one thing that Dedar taught me, and one of the things he taught me was, there's time, and there's temple time. And so he always shared that with me and made a number of jokes, and as we always started the parade late, he was always to assure me it was starting directly on time, no matter how I thought of it, so. And then we have both James Gallagher and Jim Nielsen to come forward and give a certificate
Dedar, you are truly a legend, renowned and respected in two nations, India and in the United States. I call this region the Punjab of America. And I've traveled in the Punjab of India, and I know what a wonderful place that is. And you, Dedar, as a leader, have come here and made this Punjab as wonderful as that Punjab, and established a wonderful legacy, a legacy for India and a legacy for America. We appreciate all that you've done. And this is just but a small acknowledgement by the State Legislature, Assemblyman Gallagher and I, who were humbled and honored to be your friends. This lowly farmer from Sangre, California feels way over my head to be acknowledging you for all you have accomplished. But please know, my words come from the heart, and they come from the heart of thousands and thousands of Californians who do know you, what you have accomplished, and appreciate it. God love you, Dedar Bains, a truly great man.
You know, this is a very special moment for me, because growing up in the Yuba-Sutter area, Dedar is just someone that you have a lot of reverence for. And that's the word reverence, because he's really, to me, he's always been larger than life. And I remember the first time, you know, I think it's my grandfather who said, hey, when the President comes to this area, he stays at Dedar Bains' house. And he was talking about President Bush, I believe, at the time. And as many of you know, Dedar has, you know, an advisor and a trusted confidant of many people in high leadership positions in this nation, in our state, in our local communities. And so it's an honor for me to be able to recognize you tonight, Dedar. And, you know, I think of his generation. He's one of the great people of this generation, of that generation, who came here and not only contributed, but made this area great. You know, we could talk about a lot of things, farming. He built a very large farming empire in this state that still stands to this day. We could talk about the development of West Yuba City, which has done so much to the economic development of Yuba City. We could talk about, and we have talked about, the Sikh Parade, and how really, Yuba City has been put on the map internationally because of the leadership of Dedar. But so many things, but I think one of the greatest things is just, he has an amazing family. And you look around here and you see Santi, and Ajit, Carm, Diljit, all of the, you know, brothers and sisters, cousins, the great family that has been built here, and the great legacy that we see in the next generation, and the next generation that will continue to be here in Yuba City and carry on that great legacy. It all started with one man. And we are very thankful for Dedar Bains, and it's my honor, along with Senator Nielsen, to recognize him tonight with this certificate.
We're going to get it.
We're going to get it changed, yeah.
He told me we got to change that ag overtime bill, so I'm working on that for next year.
You know, it's great when you know a true leader hands another leader that kind of responsibility. So James, I think you better get it done. Well, we do have one thing remaining from the City Council and from the citizens of Yuba City. And these are not given out lightly and without a great deal of respect. But we, Dedar, would like you to have a key to the city of Yuba City. This is something that, again, we undertake this with great pride in being able to provide you this key, because you have opened so many doors for so many. And the years of service that you have given, and the understanding that you have provided to our community of the Sikh religion, the Sikh faith, all of the customs and cultures, and certainly bringing everyone together. You deserve this more than any other person that I know or have ever met that has led in or around Yuba City. So with that, a key to the city, Dedar. Now I want to take an opportunity to give the microphone to Cash Gill. And he has a three-page message he wants to give.
You said we weren't leaving anywhere, right? Don't worry, microphones coming, my buddy. First of all, I just want to say thank you to each and every one of you guys that are here tonight. For those of you that don't know me, I'm Cash Gill. I am the nephew of Dedar Singh Bains. And years and years back, I just want to say, first of all, thank you. It is because of Dedar Singh Bains that I am here today. Him, along with my Aunt Santi, sponsored our family. On our family's side, there are five sisters and three brothers. And Mr. Dedar Bains and Santi sponsored all of us here, got us all settled here, helped the entire family get settled, helped them buy property, helped them give them down payments for the property, made sure that the kids were all in line. And if we got in trouble, we'd get a phone call from Uncle Dedar, and we'd know at the wrong time that, oh my God, it's Uncle Dedar calling. What did we do wrong, right? So we had that much respect. We were that much afraid of Uncle Dedar at that point in time. Growing up, I mean, my first job was at Uncle Dedar's place. I was in seventh grade, taking out I was in seventh grade, taking out bins, bin carriers. We were taking out peach bins right here where Walmart used to be, and now it's Sam's Club right here. And that was the last deal that Sam Walton himself came to Yuba City to negotiate on behalf of Sam's and Walmart. So that tells you the type of pull that Uncle Dedar has, not only back then, completely right now as well. Growing up with Uncle Dedar, at one point in time, a lot of the farmers were having a tough time getting loans in Yuba City. The chairman and the president of the bank, Feather River State Bank, came to Mamaji's place here at the shop. And he came in and said, I really need your help. We need to be helping loan some money to farmers, and I need you to buy some shares in our bank and get it started. And I remember Uncle Dedar told him, you know, I don't want to be a board member, but I will buy some shares in the bank, help Feather River State Bank. And before Feather River State Bank sold, it was one of the most successful banks providing loans to farmers, East Indian farmers as well. And it all is because of the foresight and the vision that Mamaji had at that point in time. Mamaji, I mean, we talked about some of this stuff, you've heard some of the donations he's made, but he's a true philanthropist. He's made hundreds of thousands of donations dollars to schools, to clinics, to all over, temples across the whole United States. And if you ask him, he says, you know, it's always the grace of God that I'm able to do these things. I've traveled into ranches with him, and his main motto's always been, is you've got to talk to the trees. And you go, what? You've got to talk to the trees. That's how the trees are going to produce. The other thing that he's always taught me is, you know, you've got to get out of Yuba City. You've got to travel. That's when you know what the world's doing. The world's not going to come to you. You need to go to the world. And all of us here in the council have traveled here to Washington DC, Texas, London, India, wherever we travel. The first thing they ask is, where are you from, Yuba City? Do you know Dedar Singh Baines? Yes.[721.43][721.43](laughter) And so the minute I say that, all of a sudden, the conversation completely gets started at that point in time. As we honor Dedar Singh Baines tonight, my uncle, who is a true example of what the American dream is all about. He's built the American dream here, he's living the American dream. It wasn't given to him. He's built it with his own two hands. And we look at our Uncle Dedar and said, if Uncle Dedar can do it, we can do it too as a community as well, as well as a family. I'm proud here tonight to be standing besides him, one of my truest uncles here. Look, I've got other two uncles here as well we all look up to. He's not only a visionary, he's a pioneer, he's a leader, he's a pillar. He's a pillar of not only our family, but he's a pillar of our entire community at large. And for that, Mamaji, I thank you for everything that you've done for our family, plus everything that you've done for our entire community. Thank you.[776.73][776.73](applause)
So, you think you're still going to get the microphone, don't you?[791.87][791.87](laughter) I think we might have a couple more people that would like to speak first, okay? One of the things that I'd like to do is any member of the Sutter County Board of Supervisors that would like to come up and speak tonight, certainly we'll give you the microphone for a few minutes. So Dan Flores is going to be speaking.
Calling me up? Oh, cover you up? Okay. So for me, it's an honor as well. You know, we've heard the words tonight. We know about this great man and what he's done in our community and his family that's here. And, you know, I'm somewhat of a newcomer here, actually. I came about 17 years ago to Yuba City, and some of the first people I met were the Baines family and Dedar and the whole family. And to be, to know this family is to know this community, and it's truly an honor to be a part of this community. And it is true, being able to travel around the world and being able to say, where are you from, in Yuba City? And then the Baines family is mentioned wherever you go. The leadership is shown throughout the world. It's just a true honor. So I don't, you know, just to follow up on all the words that were said tonight, it's, my word is just an honor to be able to live here in this community with Dedar Baines and with his family. Congratulations, Dedar.[888.56][888.56](applause)
Not quite yet, not quite yet.[896.12][896.12](laughter) So we also have representatives here from Yuba County. And any member, and I see John Nicoletti is going to come forward and give us a few words about Dedar.
Thank you.
Hello, boss man, how are you?
I'm good. Glad to see you. So my beginning with this family was actually the time that I was running the refuge restaurant in Yuba City. And I got a call from Ajit, and he said, say, I need to put together an event for our grandfather. And I said, okay. You know, we plan parties all the time. And he said, how many people do you think you'll have? And he reached off the phone and said, how many people? And I said, maybe 120, maybe 150. Okay, 150. He said, okay, 150 people. And we want lots of food, we want to have a lot of services available. I said, okay. I said, now, when do you want to pull the calendar open? When do you want to have this party? He said, it'll be tomorrow night.[956.06][956.06](laughter) I was in the business for a long time. You don't pull 150 people together by tomorrow night, you know? And I said, are you sure, Ajit? Because, you know, once we buy the food, once we set everything, we've got to pay this. He says, yeah, it'll be there. And it was, and it was incredible, and it was beautiful, and it began a relationship that has carried on. And I have always been blessed to be able to say that we are dear family friends. And we just love being part of this family. And so to be able to witness what you do through your political strength and for the gifts that you've brought to this community, it has been an absolute honor. And I just want you to know, the answer is always going to be yes. You can ask for anything you need. In Yuba County, we're very, very pleased and thankful for everything you've done for us. Thank you.[1007.31][1007.31](applause)
Thank you, John. And I do want to open up an opportunity for the other council members to come forward. And they're going to join us up front, and they can also make a couple of comments. And then we're going to start stacking the deck, and it'll make more sense here in a moment what's going to happen. So I'll turn the mic over to Councilmember John Dukes.
Well, Dedar, I'm kind of a newcomer to this community also, coming here to this community back in 1999 and getting involved in this community right off the bat with an annexation of Happy Park area. And it has been a pleasure to have you as one of the founding fathers of this community and anchor to know that we can count on everything that you do to help this community to continue to grow. And as I mentioned earlier, your influence is not just here in this community, it is around the world. And as I mentioned, the taxi ride in Washington DC, and when the driver asks you where you're from and you say Yuba City, and he says, do you know Dedar Baines? And it's like, that's pretty amazing to have that kind of influence clear across the country. And a free ride, yeah, there we go.[1101.41][1101.41](laughter) No, I think he's still charged us anyhow, but he is now wearing a Yuba City pin, but anyhow. But Dedar, thank you for all that you have done for this community to make it a great place to live. Thank you.[1115.00][1115.00](applause)
I moved here because I enjoyed and wanted to be in a farming community as vibrant as it is. And your contributions to this community have sustained that vibrancy and made sure that our community has a great agricultural base. And that is what I appreciate personally about it, and that's why I came here, to raise my children here. Had family, my wife was here, and we would visit all the time, so I got to know the area and said, that's where I want to raise my kids. And so that's why I moved here. And then the only other point that I'd like to say is that when it comes to political advice and to learn and understand how things operated in a political way, locally and nationally, I would come and ask you about some of that stuff. Sometimes I didn't like your answer, because I had a personal feeling about it. But you always were honest with me. You were always honest with everybody about your opinions and thought on things, and I can respect that very much. And I appreciate your candor and honesty with me. And you were right almost all the time. So I can say that his advice was something that I learned to take very seriously. And so I appreciate that quality that you have shown as a pillar in this community. Thank you very much.[1205.66][1205.66](applause)
So what do I say? I'm going to hold your hand. You...[1216.91][1216.91](laughter) My hands are always cold. He was trying to warm them up earlier.[1223.41][1223.41](laughter) Dedar, you are like a father to me. My dad was his friend. And my mom. You guys have been close from day one, and I have been just honored by your friendship, your fatherhood. Your kids have been a blessing in my life. Carm has just been a buddy to me for years and years. Thank you for raising such a beautiful son. You were inspiration from the beginning. You were a visionary. You gave life to this community in so many ways, to our children as well. Your passion, your internal drive has been completely and utterly, in every possible way, a positive thing for this community, a positive avenue for me. When I started running through the campaigns, you gave me advice. You would tell me, call me, and I appreciate it so very much. I am just awed by everything you have done, and I hope that we can all just do a fraction of what this man has done, and it'd be a better place. So thank you so much for everything you've done. We love you.[1315.12][1315.12](applause)
All right. You deserve this. So I'm actually going to give you the microphone, Dedar.[1327.12][1327.12](laughter) All right?
(inaudible)
Oh, no, no. But go ahead, I'll hold it.
Well, John worked a long time in the police. He's still checking my blood if I'm not getting mad or anything. This is my happy little day. I appreciate everyone who came. We are all one family. We are teaching the whole world, we live like a little one family. This is heaven. I heard from Laura, too many religious people. I said, where is heaven? They said, we never seen where is heaven. Heaven is when you're happy yourself, be good with the neighbors. Try to, the neighbors are highly good, that's the heaven. You have to make heaven yourself. Yuba City is heaven. One time, one newspaper asked me, why do you live in Yuba City? I said, well, this is our own place, like Jim Nielsen said, this is Punjab, weather and soil. So we know if anything goes wrong, we can go to work. We still can provide food for children, good water here, good weather. Yuba City in California, good area to live. So slowly, slowly, you all learn where you grow. Have to guard with us all the time. What is God, God's name? Think about God, what God tells us. That's what God says, be true, be nice with everybody, don't hate anybody, so then he loves you regardless where you are. So I think all you guys live in Yuba City, young, older already, you know what is a good place. The time is coming bad in the earth. There are some people who work all their life, now they fail. They like to take the money from America. They have all the eyes on America. You can see Trump here. I had before my mind, I'm going to vote for him now, ask me. I said, no, I don't want to vote for him.[1498.12][1498.12](laughter) So we want to keep our own people here, he's a long time history in the United States, that roots here, parents, grandparents, everybody. Even she's bad or good, but she still belong to here. That guy make a deal. I think he's going to sell the market somewhere, you know, we sitting here, be broke.[1531.08][1531.08](laughter) I hope not, I hope he can no chance.[1535.83][1535.83](laughter) Carm will come, I think he shake a hand with him. Don't worry about that. Well, I think I cut off my time, you all had to go eat, and you tired. We can have something later, later fun later after the party.
Well...[1561.58][1561.58](applause)
(inaudible)
No, we still have many hours to go.[1573.12][1573.12](laughter) We're not done yet. So what I would like, Dedar, is to have your immediate family come forward and...
That's the immediate family.
I know.
So it's like, nothing.
Absolutely. Without them, you can do nothing. This is made in China.[1594.00][1594.00](laughter)
So just where he left off in mentioning how much this city means to him and to our family, that my father thought of having this made for you all. And I'll just read what it says. It has the city logo on top, and it says, "The city of Yuba City. The place I call home. So in addition to this, that the family would like to dedicate an area here at City Hall where my father will come and plant a peach tree, and we'll have two benches that are set in his honor in thanks and appreciation for the city of Yuba City. And again, we want to thank each and every one of you for being here.[1676.12][1676.12](applause) But just, it was timing was everything. So as if everybody in here, majority of us are farmers, so we know that we can't get the nursery out of the cold storage until January. So that'll, look forward to that in January. But I'm going to pass this mic back. And I think this was supposed to be a photo op, but since I've got the mic and it's kind of hot, that I just want to say thank you to each and every one of you from the bottom of my heart. It means a great deal to me. My dad has mentioned over and over that this is one family, you are all our family. If you're here, it's because you're family and you mean the world to us. I thank you once again.[1715.83][1715.83](applause) So this is, congratulations to everybody. This is, I think, I'm not sure if Rachel's still here from the appeal, but that she called and asked my dad what he thought of leading up to this evening. And he said that it's a true honor, and he said, but it's not only my honor. He said that it's an honor for this community, it's an honor for our people and the city of Yuba City. Everybody should feel honored by tonight's presentation and recognition. So congratulations to all of you.[1753.00][1753.00](applause)
So do you want to look on the bench? Oh, sorry. Sorry.
All right. So, yeah, so we're going to start, we're going to reshift this a little bit. Because the council chambers is now going to get, is going to get packed. So the next level of the Baines family, if we can get everybody to come forward, so anyone, there you go. anyone, there you go, brothers, sisters, nephews, nieces.
I'll take this, so you can sit somewhere to sit, or stand, rather.
So you wanna back up to the actual...
Yeah, back up a little bit and face, yeah. All right. I think we have fulfilled the obligation for the photo opportunity tonight, but I know that the Baines family has scheduled a reception following this over at Ting's Refuge. So everyone is invited, the last I heard, except for, except for me.
No, no, everybody, everybody.
So everyone is invited to Ting's. And, and anyone, yeah, anybody that wants to do a photo op with Dedar, it's open by the family to do that. And tonight, we will adjourn the meeting. So thank you all for coming. This meeting is adjourned.